Thank you and welcome to the Candidates Night. This is the second hour of the Candidates Night for us to meet the school board candidates for RSU 38 School Board. I'm going to be a little bit repetitive if you've been with us for the first hour, but if you're joining us, this information will be new and it's still be new for these candidates as well. I'm Bruce Bergoing. My job is to facilitate the questions and to try to pace us to cover as much as we possibly can in the hour that we have. I did prepare some possible questions and I shared those in advance for the candidates. Those were really just kind of to prime the pump, to hopefully not be used as much as we get public questions. The way you can ask a public question is in the chat if you're on Zoom. We are having some technical issues, but if you do have a question after we do a couple of initial rounds, please do type it into the chat and Bill will hand it to me. We might also have some time for the candidates to ask each other questions as well. I'm going to try to keep things moving along and one of my tasks is to avoid duplicative questions. The candidates will have a minute and a half each to answer a question. I have a yellow card that indicates 30 seconds are left. Once we've kind of established a conversation flow, I'm not going to bother with those time limits if we're pacing okay. So I think, and I think we'll be able to do that. The website has the Zoom link, so if you want to go to reedfield.org, that is where the Zoom link is and the telephone number and how you can type into chat. You can identify yourself or not as you wish, but really questions should be from Reedfield residents and voters. Our ground rules are very simple for both candidates and callers. Let's just be neighborly and courteous. We'll be posting this later on YouTube. We're live tonight on cable channel access seven. And so now we're going to meet the candidates who are running to serve you. And I'm going to ask each of you to introduce yourselves, starting with Sean and then followed by Patty, and to tell us about your interest in running. And I will state up front that you're both incumbents. Sean, go ahead.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you for putting this together. My name's Sean Roderick. I've lived in Reedfield since December of 2012, my wife and I and my two children, who both attend Reedfield Elementary, one in third grade and one in fifth grade. We moved to Reedfield because my wife has a background, she graduated from Uman Farmington with a background in education and she did a lot of research. We lived about an hour away and a lot of research in the area about the schools. And she, after calling, she actually called some of the principals to figure out their education philosophy, decided we were going to live in this district. So we started looking for a house in the school district. And I was signed up, had been involved in all the towns we had lived in in one way or another with the board or something. And I put a paper in to say I'd be interested in joining a board. And it wasn't too long after I got a call from the current town manager who was like, hey, you kind of look like you might be a good candidate for the school board. Would you be interested in filling it out? They needed to appoint, fill out an application. And I did, and now it's been over seven years and it's been great being involved in the school board.
Thank you, Sean. Patty?
I'm Patty Gordon and I have lived in Reedfield since 1990. And when I moved here with my now husband, and he grew up here, although he'll tell you he's really from Atlanta, but he lived here since he was eight, so it sort of counts. And I am a teacher and a librarian now. I was a teacher at Moranacook Middle School for 20 years and am now a teacher and librarian at Oak Hill Middle School. And I was really excited to get involved with the school board here in our towns when I stopped being an employee of RSU 38 because I just really want to be involved with the school district and try to do whatever I can to work in conjunction with all these other folks to make our mission come to be.
Thank you, Patty. I think we already established that we don't get time limits, so we'll just go with the questions and move on. So I'll just start with a couple of questions and I'll give this one to you, Patty, first. How can local, how can the local community become more connected and involved in our schools?
We were just talking about this kind of thing. I think that I'm going to answer your question circuitously. The, the, one of the upsides of COVID, I think, are these Zoom meetings in a way, because everybody has Zoom fatigue and all of that stuff, but more people are involved in more things, certainly in my life, in my world, than prior to having all of this Zoom access or online access. And I hope that after the pandemic or wherever we're at next school year or now, people, more people will come to the school board meetings that are online and more people will contact us. It would be wonderful if folks contacted us, came to those meetings, because I was, at the last meeting, I don't know if any of you on the TV were there, but there were so many celebrations and wonderful things that were happening. And as somebody, I have two, I didn't say this part before, I have two sons who graduated from Moranacook and am currently empty nesting. So I don't hear about the amazing things that are happening except for at the school board meetings. And I wish that more people did that, too. And also, our schools have amazing websites. I have been really impressed with the way that the websites have been kind of diversified and made more user-friendly and have so much information on them from all of our schools and people can check out the websites maybe more often. So I, I hope that people come more often to board meetings and hear about all the really cool events that are happening in all of the schools.
Thank you. And so same question to you, Sean. How can a local community become more connected and involved in our schools?
Yeah, I mean, echo what Patty said, you know, it's right now because of the Zoom meetings, it's pretty easy. Sometimes you'll see people pop on making dinner, you know, it's informal, it's okay, you know, participate in, you know, in that, those type of ways. Also, you know, before COVID, before, you know, that seems to be a thing now, but before COVID, our schools would do a lot of things, letting folks know about what's being taught within education or community events. And I kind of felt bad sometimes because I would try to go with my, you know, the kids would be welcome or the principals or teachers would put a lot of effort into explaining what the new curriculum may be or asking input from the community. And there was very few people who showed up at those events. Sometimes it would just be me and maybe one of the two other school board members. So I think when those events start happening again, I really encourage the community to come to those events and give their input because the school board and the administration and the, you know, are looking for input from the community. So I really encourage the community to come to those events. And also encourage people to reach out, as Patty said, the websites have a lot of information, especially on the budget. I think it's in a user-friendly format in the agendas. Reach out, not just when you have a complaint, but reach out if you have positive. As I said to Patty, it seems like I only hear from folks when they're wound up about something. It'd be nice to hear from folks with some positive input, so.
Great. And so Sean, I'll just continue with a question of you. I'm going to try to alternate back and forth, so it means you'll always be back to back on something, and that's probably not bad. What are your personal goals for Moranacook Schools over the next three years? And what would you like to see RSU 38 accomplish during your term?
Um, I think right now, you know, I was working on some things, I was talking to Patty about, which I'll get to, is really using the COVID dollars that we're getting, the money we're getting, our school district, I don't want to misquote the number, but a significant amount of money. To use that to help make sure as much money as possible goes to the student, to, you know, help. Like, one of the things I'm excited about is students who need the help are going to be offered summer school. We're using some of that money to offer summer school and then based on the response from that, the next tier will be offered. So I think that's great that students are going to have that opportunity for the month of July, who teachers think need that help to go to summer school. One of the things I'd like to see kind of long-term, once we get through some of this COVID stuff, is, is we have a great dual enrollment program with Thomas College, but I'd like to see that with a community college so that students could graduate, maybe with a trade or something along those lines within a one, you know, from Moranacook High School with a trade. Because for, you know, some students, the ability to go to college or not have to go right into the workforce after they graduate, you know, that's the only option they have. And there are some opportunities, you know, through other work I do, there can be some agreements. And I'd like to see if that's, I'd like to work towards having that be a possibility, where students may be able to graduate from Moranacook with a degree from Kennamack Valley Community College or something along those lines.
Great. And so Patty, same question. What are your personal goals for Moranacook Schools over the next three years? And what would you like to see RSU 38 accomplish during your term?
Well, I, I feel like in the short term, I think that my personal goals have to do with doing everything I can to aid in the transition to next year or post-COVID school life. And I think especially, I think that there's a lot of attention to support. I hope that we can maintain the attention that is currently being given to supporting students in the ways that Sean just said, like with summer school programming and with supporting students' mental health needs, especially as we transition back to being all the time back at school. But I also really want to be involved in helping folks figure out how we can go back to having rigorous curricula without making it all feel like everyone's behind. Because that emphasis on the behind, even though everybody in the world missed a chunk of school, I, I feel, I just feel concerned about, I just want to figure out a way to do that with a more positive way. You know, I don't want to ignore what has happened, but I, anyway, I just would like to work with people to give some attention to that and make as smooth a transition as possible to returning to the awesome and rigorous curricula that is, exists in all of our schools without tons of, you know, rushing to catch up and these things like that. Since we know that rushing and playing catch-up is not the best way of, for most people to learn. I also feel like I want to continue the work that a lot of people have been working on of making our schools a place that staff want to stay at. Ooh, I ended in a preposition. I, there were a few years where there was really high staff turnover in all of our buildings and that is less so than it was, but still significant. And I just want to keep working on, on that.
Great. Thank you, Patty. I would remind the public that if you are using the Zoom, the Zoom app, you can type a question into chat and it will be relayed to me so that we can answer it. It's your night and don't hesitate to do that. The next question is, and to you Patty first, is just tell us about your perspectives on education and its funding.
I think that my perspective is that we, you know, that the current funding formulas are not ideal, but I think that we need to just keep working in conjunction with the select board and town officials and doing everything that we can to get information to and from people in the town so that we can work on school funding, education funding together in a really collaborative way.
Sean?
Yeah. When it comes to the school funding, I mean, there was an announcement today that the governors put out a supplemental budget to reach the 55%, whatever that number is, no one can agree on in the state if you ask, but anyway, to give a significant increase to hopefully to reach that goal. And one of the things I hope is, as, you know, the state gives more dollars to local school districts, we use that to lower property taxes because there are folks who are struggling to pay that property tax that, you know, and if the state is going to dedicate more funds towards education, we don't just keep the current local municipality funding where it is. And we use the state money to try to lower or at least even out the amount that the local property taxpayers pay. Because you see that sometimes in municipalities, when revenue sharing and stuff increases, the municipality just raises the budget and it doesn't bring that tax relief it's made to bring. So one of my goals will be, as I believe there's going to be, I don't know if it's going to be as much as, you know, as people know who have been involved in state budget or have heard, it doesn't always come out how the governor proposes, but I think there's going to be more money for local schools. And my goal is going to be to use that to try to lower property taxes and provide the best possible education we can to our students.
Great. Some of the questions I ask have nuances that relate to answers you've already given and that's okay. You can expand on those answers or use them to kind of, you know, talk again, if you will, about primary goals that you have. I do have a quick question for both of you. I know that the school board meetings, the RSU meeting is going to be coming up. Can either of you share the time of that? Do you, do you have that on your calendar or something that you can tell us about?
Could be 18?
7:00? I want to say it's 7:00.
Is it, is it the 19th?
Sorry, I should know these.
I should too. I thought it was the 18th, but hang on.
It may be the 18th. I'm not sure.
19 is the Wednesday. Is it, it's the 19th?
Yep, 19th, that's 7 o'clock.
And that is the annual public meeting, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And will that be at the school and will it be a public meeting?
Yes.
It is at the high school.
It's at the high school.
Unlike the bulk of the board meetings this year have been at the middle school, the budget meeting will be at the high school.
So great. So you have it straight from the horse's mouth there. So my next question is, and I guess I'll start with Sean. I've lost my place anyhow.
No worries.
Are there some matters or trends that are not directly related to schools happening in Maine or not happening that you'd like to encourage?
Trends that are happening? Okay, sorry, I'm just trying to get that over. Are there some trends?
They're never trick questions, so if they don't make a lot of sense, it's the fault of the writer, which is me.
I mean, I think when it comes to trends, I mean, you see this in, is getting students, I saw this more before COVID, trying to get professionals into the schools to share, or folks into the schools to share about career paths and, you know, things like that. And I think that is great anytime that we can have folks share their career, you know, share their careers and different options in the world, you know, even at the younger levels. There's studies that have been done that kids are starting to think about. I saw one by the main state, you know, fourth grade. And the more we can get folks into schools and share about what's out there in the world and there's, you know, I had a teacher in school, there was a bridge in the town, there's more between the, there's more to the world than between the bridge between Anson and Madison. You know, my goal is to get you beyond that bridge. That's what a teacher used to always say. So if we can kind of get students opened up to the world and what's out there, I think that's always a good thing.
Thank you, Sean. So Patty, same question. Are there some matters or trends that are not directly related to schools happening in Maine or not happening that you'd like to encourage?
That, what comes to my mind right away is the, and I don't know that this is separate from schools because I think this is everywhere, but that I, there is a trend, there's a national trend to consider issues of inclusivity on all levels in all ways. And I know that we have done some talking about that at the curriculum, the subcommittee of the board, the curriculum committee, and what that might look like in the future. And that's something that I think is just really, really important for us all to do in big and small ways and think about inclusivity, not only in curriculum, but in policy and in everything that we do.
Patty, actually, that kind of prompted a question from me to both of you. And you mentioned the subcommittee you served on. Since you're both incumbents, do you serve as an officer or as a part of any subcommittees?
Yep. I have been on the curriculum committee, the policy committee, and the Health Center Advisory Board.
I've been on the negotiation committee pretty much the whole time, which is.
A lot.
Been a lot of work.
That's a lot of hours.
Yes. Yeah. But I think we've come a long way in some of our contracts and stuff, so it's been great.
Well, we're, we're going to go back to coronavirus for a moment. It is an extraordinary time and it was an extraordinary time this past year for schools. What priorities would you see as important to consider as we deal with the coronavirus pandemic and its aftermath in our schools and in education generally? Sean?
Well, I think, you know, and I meant, I was going to bring this up earlier, but one of the things from the Corona, you know, I try to, you know, I tell my kids to, don't always think about the negatives. And one of the positives is every kid in our school, K to 12, now has some type of computer device, whether it be like my son in third grade, he has an iPad with a keyboard. The, my daughter in fifth, fifth grade has a laptop. So every kid in our district, which I think is pretty neat, has some type of device. So every kid's on even footing to do homework, do research. Our school did a great job making sure that everybody had access to the internet. They had the, I'm probably a Kajit, it's a type of thing where.
A mobile hotspot.
A mobile hotspot, basically. So they did a, you know, to reach out. So I hope that continues beyond COVID, that every kid has technology so that they're kind of on that even footing. Because I know when I was in school, that wasn't the case. And, you know, if I needed to do research and stuff, I'd have to try to find a local library and things like that. So I think that's pretty good. The other thing is, is, you know, Patty mentioned this, I don't want to see just always us talking about catch-up, you know, catch-up, catch-up. Like, let's get, figure out where the students are at and let's start challenging them where they're at when we come back into school. And I think that's a great, you know, and that sounds like what, from what we've been told, what we're going to be doing is, you know, they don't want to be talking about students being behind and things like that. And they don't want to keep students back, which I think is great to hear because a lot of this is no fault of the student, so. And, and the other thing, I know I'm going on a little bit, is I think COVID brought out, like opened, I know, and my kids group, you know, I say my kids groups, but in the parents that my kids hang out with and stuff, the need in this community, like the need of kids who, or I say kids, but families who rely on the schools for, so they can go to work, so their kids have a couple square meals a day. And that kind of opened my eyes, I know, and people I talked to, the food boxes, the community was amazing, donating food and donating money and stuff like that. And it kind of opened up the eyes that I think we need to, a lot of people, you know, a lot, I don't say a lot, but there are a number of people living on the edge of, and relying on the schools. And I think we need to keep those things going to make sure that kids have meals and have those type of things.
Thank you, Sean. So Patty, again, it's an extraordinary time. What priorities would you like to, do you see as important to consider as we deal Corona, the coronavirus pandemic and its aftermath in our schools and in education generally?
Well, I am repeating myself, I think, a little bit with this one because I think, well, to piggyback on what Sean just said, I think this, I think that the priority of, we have done in RSU 38 a decent job. I think a good, a great job, people have done a great job of trying to reach students who have been not reachable and to get people's needs met in terms of food and what people need. I think that it would be just a very high priority to try to make sure that keeps happening. And thinking about mental health needs, needs to keep happening. And I think our, the mental health folks in our district have been phenomenal and we need to support them in whatever way we can so that they can continue to do the phenomenal stuff that they've been doing. Because I think this transition is going to be rough for everybody and, or maybe it won't be. Maybe we'll just go, get to go back to school and it'll be glorious and everyone will be really appreciative, you know, I'm not sure. I think that that whole notion of, I think a huge priority is for us to be patient and flexible with one another about how we're going to meet kids' academic needs and meet them where they're at, like Sean was just saying, so there isn't the sort of push and blame game, like you're behind, you're behind, you missed half a third grade and now you're, you know, never going to catch up. And that is just, could be super damaging. So I hope that we can continue to make a priority out of being flexible, proactive, and patient.
Thank you. We did have a question that came in over the chat and I, and I will say, this chat, this question has some dollar amounts in it, so I don't know if they're correct or not, but just assume the spirit of the question, if you will, in answering it. So, and I'll start with you, Patty, with this. RSU 38 received $2.6 million in COVID money. Do you think the superintendent should share an itemized report of where those funds were used?
I think that the superintendent, so I'm not going to talk about that dollar amount because I can't remember the total dollar amount of the COVID monies, the three grants that have come in. But I think that the superintendent is sharing how the money has been used in, my understanding from our last board meeting, Sean, jump in if I'm wrong, or if I'm right, is that at the annual meeting on May 19th, the budget meeting, the, and in the, in the news flyer that goes out to talk about what's going to happen in that meeting, there is some information about how the COVID monies have been spent. And it's not really specific, like line by line, but there is a, there's, the plan was for there to be a, like a suggestion to go to the website where there was going to be a link to an itemized budget of just how the COVID money was going to be spent. So that should be available on the website. And because that, I haven't seen it, I haven't looked for it, so I don't know if it's already there, but that should be there. And if it is there, I think the superintendent has done a fine job of telling people how the $2.6 million in COVID relief money has been spent.
Great. Do you want me to reread?
Yeah, no, I, Patty did a good job explaining it all. I guess I'll just add, I'll add that I know we were given this information as a board and I believe, and generally, again, because I had it, I believe it is posted on the website if, and I'll go check tonight and if it's not, I'll make sure it is. I know it is ready, readily available if any members of the public want it. And I'm sure the superintendent, from my experience, has always been great at getting back to anybody who's reached out to him. So if it's not there, we'll make sure it is. And I know it is available because we've, we've received it. And it was a priority of the board to make sure that the public knew what had been spent just so that, because it's all in mine, and I said this at the board meeting, I'll say it tonight, to me, it's all taxpayer money, whether it came from the feds or local tax dollars. So I believe it is available and if it's not, we will make sure it's up on the website.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So we've got a straightforward answer to that. When we, when the select board candidates were talking, I let them also ask a question of each other if they wanted to, and that was completely unscripted and unprepared. But I welcome you to do that as well, if either of you has a question or maybe it's just a conversation starter to ask of the other candidate. Would either of you like to do that?
I don't know that I have a question.
I don't know. What thing I want to, do want to bring up, and I can't believe we haven't mentioned it, and I think if Jay was watching, he'd be a little, is we have a bus driver shortage in our district.
Oh, good, yeah, yeah.
A severe bus driver shortage. And if it wasn't for, I mean, there were, there's been times where we've had to cancel bus runs and parents and last minute and there, I don't want to spread a fear, but there is a concern if we don't attract some bus drivers, there could be some issues transporting students to events and stuff next year. So if anyone out there is a bus driver or has a bus driver's license, we desperately need you in RSU. And it's not just RSU 38, but it's really, I was talking to the Secretary of State about this not too long ago, Chana Bellis, and it's like a statewide issue. But if anyone's out there with a, looking for something to do, we desperately need bus drivers in this district.
Do you want to add anything to that or any other thoughts about positions or anything?
I don't have anything to add.
Great.
Yeah. I just was going to say regarding a question for you, Sean, I don't have one. And I think that I don't have one because if we were offered that opportunity three years ago, when I didn't know you, I might've had a question, but I feel like we, this year has been really intense on the board and lots of stuff. We've had lots of opportunity to talk to each other and as Reedfield people and as, just as board. Reedfield people, but, and as, just as board people. And I, I don't really have a question.
No, I know we spend a lot of time together.
Yeah. And to kind of clarify, you'll be voting for two people for school board positions. So actually the two of you are unopposed in essence.
Right.
Great. Uh, we'll go back to the questions I have. Uh, and again, some of these just wrap around, maybe you reiterating or expanding on something you previously said. And I'll go to Patty first. Uh, do you see any significant goals that the school board as a whole ought to consider or items that you would like to see elevated as priorities?
I think that what, what I said at the last question is true for this question too, and that the pri, a priority of, um, working with everyone, all stakeholders to collaborate to make sure we have the smoothest post-COVID transition possible is, that's number one.
Yeah, I would agree. The smoothest transition and, uh, just everyone, you know, be willing, parents, staff, school board members, be patient with the return. You know, there's going to be some, you know, there's always bumps in the road, but remain positive because I know in my two students, when teacher, you know, I, I, everyone has bad days. When there's tension in the air, the kids feel it. And we all need to stay as positive as possible.
Great. So this is, um, actually the last question that I have before we go to closing thoughts. Um, this is a little shorter than the previous hour, but that's because I'm talking to two people instead of three. So if you are still watching and you have a question that you're dying to ask in the chat, uh, while we're talking through this next question, uh, which will be a brief one, I think, you might want to call, you might want to type that in right away. Um, uh, I, I do want to just pause for a minute and salute both of you for running for public office, uh, and asking for votes and support from your fellow citizens. It's an honorable thing to do and you have been serving. So that's honorable as well. And, and I just want to, on behalf of the community and the people who are watching, thank you for doing that. So why should people vote in this election, Sean?
Uh, to me, it's, you know, I thank everyone who's voted in the past, but to me, anytime there's an election, we, you know, I've voted since I've been able to vote since I was 18. It's important for people to participate in their, in democracy. And, and it's, you know, it's a freedom to do so. You can show up or you can, I don't know if absentee balloting has started yet.
Um, I, I believe it has.
Yeah.
Or at least the time period has started. Um, there's been some availability issues, but I, I'm pretty sure you can check with the town website and that information's there.
So it's pretty easy, people, as, you know, when there is availability, as Bruce said, check the website. You can pretty much stop by and vote anytime when the town, when, when the town is open. And I, and, uh, so I think it's important for people to participate. And there's other issues on the ballot. I know there's a whole slew of issues when it comes to, uh, the town. And I think there's a meeting tomorrow night to go over that.
Yes, there is.
Yep, the meeting to go over tomorrow night. And I would encourage people, if they have questions about the school board budget, to come out on the, the 19th and, uh, get, you know, voice any, you know, or get any questions you have answered there. And, uh, you know, I appreciate everyone, uh, participating. And, and as I've said before, not just when it comes to the election, but I wish more people would come out to the school board meetings and share their thoughts. Cause the more, you know, more ideas we have, the better.
Great. Patty, why should people vote in this upcoming election?
Well, I think Sean kind of said it all. Um, I think in order for us to be the most effective that we can in, uh, leadership of our school districts, we need people to, well, for any aspect of, of our town, we need everybody's input and people to voice their views so that we can have discussions that reflect what's happening in our town with the people, with the people who have the views. Because that is just the way to have it be the most democratic and the most effective.
Great. So we're going to go to closing statements now. And this is, um, your opportunity to, to just talk to the community directly for a minute or two. And Patty, you're first.
Um, well, I just want to thank everybody for, I want to thank you, Bruce, for making this evening happening. And it's a great opportunity to be able to share this with the people of our town. And I also want to thank you, this is not answering your question, but for your service, um, which I really, really appreciate on the select board. So, um, yeah, I just thank you for organizing it and making it happen.
Great. Sean?
Yeah. Uh, in closing, I, uh, you know, want to echo what Patty said. Thank you, Bruce, for your service. And always, not all the select boards would come when we offered the opportunity. And you and many board members always came and, uh, offered input. And I, I appreciate that. So thank you for all you've done for the town of Reedfield and participating in that process. So I appreciate that. And, um, I just encourage the community again, I know I've said it probably multiple times, but reach out, you know, when there's, if you have ideas, thoughts, I always say there's no dumb idea, you know, don't, if you have any ideas, thoughts, we're always looking for input. Uh, I've enjoyed, you know, working with Patty and the other school board members. I think we have a good team here in Reedfield and it's great to have a full slate because not all communities have a full slate. And it's great that we have that. And, uh, I've enjoyed it and I look forward to continuing the work. So.
So, uh, thank you very much, Sean and Patty. Um, this concludes our evening. The video for this evening will be posted on Reedfield's YouTube channel. Um, just kind of in closing, um, I want to, you know, we, on a regular show, we roll credits, uh, but there's been a man in a booth there named Bill Staret, who, uh, orchestrates all of our, uh, television and streaming and, and manages questions and ran out here with questions for, that came from the audience. Uh, and I'm very appreciative to him and to the town manager, Eric Dyer, who, uh, does a lot of the behind the scenes work and setting up, um, things of this nature. And, uh, finally you, the public for tuning in. So thank you and good night.